Good evening, everybody. We have, our mayor is feeling ill this evening, so I'm council member Simon Troutman, our mayor pro tem. And so we'll call this, this meeting to order. Those of you that are able, please stand and join us in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we have the open forum. I think we have at least one, maybe two committee members that want to join us. I have one card from Ruane Onasarian. Do you want to address the public? And for, for folks that are, that are just joining us, this is a three-minute opportunity for folks to address the public. It's not a call and response or a dialogue. If there are questions that are raised, our staff will respond back at the following council meeting. And whenever you're ready, if you could say your name and write your address down.
Yes, all right. Ruane Onesi-Roson, 2421 West 65th Street, Richfield. I'm here about the letter I circulated last week. I noticed that in the minutes of tonight's meetings, of the last council meetings where I read this letter out, the sum of the money that I mentioned in the letter went from 10 million to 10,000. This could be, definitely be my error. I'm not as young as I used to be. All the marbles aren't where they used to be either. But it's, it's a little big difference, and I, I just wanted to briefly read this letter again. I refer you to section 140. Also, I had the address wrong in the letter, so I've amended that, and I've given all of you copies, so I think you have them. I refer you to section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as revised, which states that approvals must be preceded by the public hearing. The public hearing scheduled and consequently held on a special meeting, the City of Richfield Housing and Redevelopment Authority, followed the signing of bonding approvals. Bonding approvals and documents were signed before the city's HRA meeting of June 25th. I submit that transactions taken approved, approvals granted thereat are unlawful and unbinding. Placing a rubber stamp approval on a $10 million bonding issue upon a consent agenda presupposes consensus form prior to the meeting. Open meeting laws exist to ensure the absence of collusion and discussion prior to the meeting, where we, the people, have complete access to all interactions between the five members of city council on every particular topic of interest. On the aside, it is our money you're spending. When bonding and stop signs are given, equal consideration, and where one qualifies, no greater discussion than the other. The public is being railroaded. Our concerns and opinions are discarded and our presence ignored. I just wanted to clear up that matter about the amount of the dollars. It's not 10,000, it's 10 million. Then, on the second issue, I did have a little chance to peruse the budget tonight, and I noticed that three members of the council received benefits. It was in the budget. But I didn't see any stipulation there where it said how much salary each, or if any of you receive, or whether you receive a stipend. And I'm also not clear on what the statutes are, or the, the city govern, governing law is with regards to how much you might receive and by way of salaries or stipends. That I'd like to be clear on. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. All right, thank you. And we, this is also open forum online and via telephone. City Clerk Leslie, do we have anybody calling in? All right, is there anybody else here for the open forum? All right, seeing nobody else, we'll close the open forum, and we will, we will approve the minutes of the June 13th work session, the June 13th council meeting, and the special closed session on June 13th, turn, excuse me, June 13th and on June 15th. Would anybody, oh.
I would, I would move that we approve the minutes with the minor but important correction of 10 million, but instead of 10,000.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Good. Now, what I imagine a lot of people are here for, we have the presentation of the Gene and Mary Jacobson Citizen of the Year Award and presentation. And so this is an incredible award for an incredible resident, and I believe we have my colleague on the Human Rights Commission, Carol Kelly, is going to come up and give the presentation.
Thank you, Simon. Good afternoon, or good evening, rather. I'm Carol Kelly Anstead. I am a human rights commissioner here in Richfield, and today we're here to present the Gene and Mary Jacobson Outstanding Citizen Award. This is an incredibly prestigious award in Richfield, and it is given to a family, group, organization, business, or individual that lives or works in the community and has shown outstanding community service, a commitment to human rights, or efforts to improve our community and make it a better place for all. The winner is selected by our commission, by the Richfield Human Rights Commission every April. So I wanted to, I can't, Kim, I wanted to throw it to Kim.
Turn it over to me.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Are you standing up there with me?
Um, no, I'm, I was just.
Mayor pro tem and council, thank you.
Thank you.
I missed last year because I had a little bout with COVID, and I apologize.
Could you come just a little closer so we can hear you and tell folks who you, some folks know who you are, a lot of folks don't know who you are.
I'm sorry, I'm Kim Jacobson. Gene and Mary were my mom and dad, and they have, they had a great love affair. It was glorious to watch, but they also had another love affair with the community, and their contribution to much of, I think, what the template back then set in motion, a lot of the way the city looks today. In the meantime, I'm grateful to be here, and I'm ready to give my award to Joe Carr.
That's incredible.
Who never gave up on his dream. Never give up on your dream? Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you, Kim Jacobson. I just want to give my, my colleagues an opportunity to, to say anything.
Just wanted, sorry, just wanted to say thank you for everything. I have never heard Joe's name about anything that wasn't immensely positive with a sense of pride, a sense of joy and appreciation for everything you've done for our, our schools, our community. And I say I've, I've never heard your name without those things, and I've heard your name a lot. Because you're, you're doing awesome things. And so just thank you. This award could not go to a better person this year, and I look forward to many more years of everything you do in our community.
It's really nice to have someone like Joe giving, getting this award, because it really shows how the community pulls together in good, positive ways. And given the times that we're in, it seems like that's what we really need is to be a community, to be a, a community that brings everybody together in good ways. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll join my colleagues. Thank you, Joe, for your work in the schools, as well as your regular annual fundraiser. It's amazing the work you've done, and you're, as Ben said, you're, you're well-known in Richfield for all the right reasons.
Joe, I just want to add to that. There is, there's a basketball statistic that folks track, just called the, the plus or minus, right? Which is when somebody's on the court, is the team getting more points or less points? And I just want to say on behalf of our city that we're so grateful you're on our team, that when you're in community, it's nothing but pluses, and we couldn't be more happy to honor you with this award. Thank you for serving our city like you do. And, and thank you. And that's probably the highlight, that's as fun as the city council meeting gets. So we will not take it personally if folks want to excuse yourself, but we have a very interesting conversation about our cable franchise coming up, so.
You want to take a screenshot with?
Oh, yeah, that would be great, yes.
One big photo with, as everyone can, we can move down the screen.
Do we have a woman for this one?
Down and up.
Come up, whoever wants to come up.
I think everyone wants.
Yeah, come on up. I can stand on another chair. Cameras on this line too, don't worry.
Right, everyone, sit a little bit.
Left side, go a little bit, over here. Yeah, over here, guys.
Stay in front of me, please.
All right, people over here, kind of go over here. Up, over, who, 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 all right. All right, gather everybody. One, two, three, go. Nice, great job.
Thank you very much. See you next year.
All right. I would entertain a movement for our, the approval of our agenda.
So moved?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, our agenda has been approved. Now we have the receipt of the City of Richfield Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year that ended December 31st, 2022, and that goes to council member Christensen.
Thank you. As required by state law, all general purpose local governments must be audited in accordance with the U.S. generally accepted auditing standards by a firm of licensed certified public accountants. In addition, state law also requires that local governments publish within six months of the close of each fiscal year a complete set of financial statements presented in conformance with the U.S. generally accepted accounting standards unless a formal extension is applied for and accepted. Accordingly, the city's auditing firm, Bergen KDV Limited, has completed the annual audit of the city's financial records and has issued an unmodified opinion on those records for the fiscal year ended December 31st, excuse me, 2022. Will the staff and finance director have the presentation?
Is it working? Yes. Good evening, mayors and mayor and council members. I am so happy to report that our annual financial audit is complete for 2022. City's auditing firm Bergen KDV, they, they performed 2022 annual audit and issued an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion an auditor is able to offer. These financial statements will be submitted to the GFOA, that is the Government Finance Officers Association, and will also be published in the local newspaper. On behalf of the finance department, I would like to thank the city manager, all department directors and their respective teams for supporting us and helping us throughout the year. Today, we have Caroline Stutzman from Bergen KDV with us to present these audited results. Caroline has been an audit director from Bergen KDV, and she has been with the firm for the last 23 years, and she will become our audit partner on July 1st, that's three days from today. Caroline, I invite you to the podium and present the audit report with our council here. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. As mentioned, I'm Caroline Stutzman. I'm going to take a few minutes of your time tonight to go through the results of the audit that's been mentioned. The main reason you ask us to work with you is to provide an opinion on those financial statements. That opinion is housed within the independent auditors' report. Independent auditors' report also outlines both management's responsibility as well as ours. So management's responsibility is for the preparation and fair presentation of those financial statements in accordance with GAAP, meaning they're determining the numbers, we then audit those numbers. We can't determine them and audit them. If a line needs to be drawn in the sand, if you will, between those two tasks. So the opinion that we're providing is what's called, as mentioned, an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level that you can receive and not a change from what you've received in the past, meaning we believe those financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects as of December 31st, 2022. So in addition to looking at the numbers, we also conducted our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. That requires us to consider internal controls as we go throughout our process. We did not have any findings in relation to that, which is not something we are able to say everywhere that we go. So that is outstanding, to be able to report that. An additional component, because the city expended more than $750,000 of federal expenditures, what's called a single audit, a separate component, two single audits actually were performed, on two separate programs, on the highway planning and construction program, as well as the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. No findings in relation to either of those additional components. And then one final component before we look at the numbers is in relation to the Minnesota Legal Compliance Audit Guide. The Office of the State Auditor puts together seven checklists filled with many questions surrounding specific Minnesota state statutes, that we ask a number of questions surrounding. There were no findings in relation to any of that either. So all great news on that front. So with that, I'll dig into the numbers. We begin with the general fund here, and this chart is more of a high level, high level view. We'll dig into the revenues and expenditures just a bit more on the, on the next slides. But revenues and expenditures both did increase for the year. Expenditures slightly exceeded revenues. There were some transfers in as well. So in the end, fund balance increased about $425,000 and ended the year at $10,990,000. So there is a small portion of that that is set aside in a category called non-spendable. It's for prepaid. Essentially, those dollars have left the building. You can't use them for future operations. So when you factor that out, that you're left with the unassigned, which is the portion that your fund balance policy looks at or analyzes. And your fund balance policy indicates that you would strive to have, maintain a minimum unassigned, unassigned fund balance of 40% of the current year expenditures. If we run the calculation for that, you're at 40.2%. So you're in compliance with the policy you've established for yourselves. So here we have a bit more information on your general fund revenue. So in total, general fund revenues increased about $971,000. Couple of components came into play there. Property taxes increased with an increase in the levy, and then your licenses and permits were down. There were fewer license, or building permits this year. Similar presentation for your general fund expenditures here. Expenditures increased 3.4%. Few different things coming into play here. Mostly, the increases had to do with some staff turnover relating to hiring some additional outside consultants, additional Excel energy rates, as well as additional training for your firefighters. So here we have a budget to actual snapshot for the general fund. So this first column is the final budget. That's what was approved here. Basically, your outline to management as far as how to run the year in, in short terms there. The actual results are in this middle column, and then the variance is in the far right column. So we can look at some of the variances for explanations, looking at the total revenue line, and all the way over in that far right column. We see that total revenues were over budget, $325,000. That's 1.2% if you apply a percentage to it, so pretty close from that standpoint. And we see that property taxes are over budget. They're just better collections than were originally anticipated. Similar analysis, looking at expenditures. Expenditures were under budget, $336,000. Again, if you apply a percentage to that, that's 1.2%. So on the size of budget that you're looking at, coming in one, within 1%, that's pretty good, I would say. A couple of the reasons for the variances that you're seeing there, public safety under budget, conservative budgeting, fire, I already mentioned, kind of on the increased side of things, that there was additional training, so over budget slightly there. And then the higher electricity led to the over budget on the public work side of things as well. So as mentioned, there were some transfers in, and here we see the total increase in fund balance of $425,000. So here we look at your tax capacity, your levy, and then the tax capacity rate. So focusing on that 2022 line, or column, I should say. Tax capacity increased four and a half percent for the year. The levy increased 5%. So just kind of the mechanics of all of those changes, tax capacity rate did go down slightly We switch gears a bit and look at your enterprise funds. So here we have your liquor fund to begin with. Sales and cost of sales both increased. The cost of sales increased at a slightly higher rate, so as a result of that gross profit percentage did go down just slightly. And then is also slightly below both the comparable metro sales as well as that metro average for the year. And that's when we compared to 2021 information. Obviously, 2022, we're all still working on, so we have to dip back just a year to look at that comparative information. The next graph that we have looks at the water and sewer utility funds. Charges for services were up here with an increase in rates, and operating expenses were up. There were a few water main breaks that happened during the year. But even with all of that, the fund did still experience operating income. So you notice we have two bars here that talk about operating income. One is, the gray bar includes depreciation expense. The purple bar factors that out. That is just a means for you to evaluate your charges for services and the level that you have, and if they are sufficient to cover all operating expenses, including depreciation expense, as a means to set dollars aside for future replacement of those assets. Occasionally, when we look at this, the gray bar dips below and the purple will be above, so it's an, an additional piece of information to analyze to see where you're at. Good news is, all five years, you are above the line for both bars. So you're fully covering depreciation expense, setting dollars aside for those future replacements. Similar analysis here for the storm sewer fund. Charges for services were up here as, and then operating expenses were down. So seeing a rebound here of that operating income compared to a slight loss last year, and showing fully covering depreciation expense for this fund as well. The last couple of charts that we have look at things from a all governmental funds perspective. And this gives us the ability to compare to statewide information when we go a year back again. But to start things off for 2022, if we compare to the previous year for just you, you see a couple of the changes that would jump out are the property taxes and intergovernmental revenue. So we touched on the increase in the levy earlier. Intergovernmental revenue has to do with the ARPA funds that were used this last year. So those, those COVID dollars still coming through. And then if we jump back a year and compare 2021, there's a lot going on in this chart, so I get that. This is the population level, if you can see my mouth, yes. The population group that we compare to. So if you compare your 2021 to this line, a couple of items or lines would jump out to you, and that would be special assessments, property taxes, and intergovernmental revenue. So you do not have a lot of special assessments as a city in comparison to your peers. So as a result, that property tax line goes the other way. So fewer special assessments, a little bit higher taxes as a result of that. And the other line is intergovernmental revenue, where you do have a bit more of that in comparison to peers, but that's, there's a lot of things, different things going on there, a lot of different grants that others could have or don't have that you do. Similar analysis then on the expenditure side of things. So again, this is all your governmental funds. Starting with 2022, current, so your current expenditures decreased. The flip side of that is that capital or project-related costs increased. And really, when you do a comparison to the previous year and your peers, those are the two lines that are, that are, that jump out as the differences. And again, that has to do with those projects that can change from one year to the next, from one city to the next in any given year. So those are your main changes that you're seeing between this. That's what I had prepared to go over with you. I'd be happy to take any questions anyone might have.
No, thank you for that presentation, council member. We, we, we could, I think maybe we should make the motion and then have the discussion, or should we have the conversation now with, while staff's here? Okay. Do you want to make the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the annual financial report of the city for the year ended December 31st, 2022.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded. All, all in favor? Oh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Is there any discussion? Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Troutman. I was going to ask two questions. One, for that last slide, do the project numbers, I know particularly one that skews certain statistics, is the, the Big Underpass project. Does it include all of the money that goes towards that, or just the Richfield portion?
I believe it's just the Richfield portion that is recorded in there. Am I correct? Okay.
Not that that's our only project. And then my, my other question was, just the, the general public and myself don't often speak in terms of unmodified or material misstatements. Can you, in layman's terms, just for anyone who's not tracking the, the technical language, just kind of give a summary of, yeah? No, thank you for that presentation, council member. We could, I think, maybe we should make the motion and then have the discussion? Or should we have the conversation now while staff's here? Okay. Do you want to make the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the annual financial report of the city for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Is there any discussion? Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. I was going to ask two questions. One, for that last slide, do the project numbers, I know particularly one that skews certain statistics is the Big Underpass project. Does it include all of the money that goes towards that, or just the Richfield portion?
I believe it's just the Richfield portion that is recorded in there. Am I correct? Okay.
Not that that's our only project. And then my, my other question was, just the general public and myself don't often speak in terms of unmodified or material misstatements. Can you, in layman's terms, just for anyone who's not tracking the technical language, just kind of give a summary of, yeah, I know you said that it's the best you can offer, but, yeah.
So basically, we have to check all of the numbers. If there was anything that would be, we have to calculate a threshold on materiality, and if there were any variations in what we looked at that would rise above the levels that we looked at, or that we audited, we wouldn't be able to provide that opinion if there were items that were not correct or something like that. We'd have to not provide an opinion on those specific pieces. So basically, it means that we've checked the numbers. There weren't material items that rose to the level for us to change our opinion. Okay.
Other comments or questions?
I just wanted to say thank you, and to Councilmember Wayland's point, I wanted to highlight for our community, in addition to making sure that all the numbers add up, you're also looking at the practices, right? Could you just say a word about that, in that it's not just that the numbers add up, but that you're also evaluating our practices?
Yep. So that touches on the government auditing standards, the second piece that I talked about where we consider internal controls. It's very common for cities to have a written finding in regards to lack of segregation accounting duties, for example. That's one that I would say ninety-five percent of--
Could you say that just a little slower? I couldn't quite hear--
Lack of segregation of accounting duties.
Oh, yes.
Basically, meaning--
Yep.
--internal controls overlap, duties overlap, where there provides more opportunity for things, basically. So being that you don't have that in writing indicates that you have mitigating controls in place to help check and balance all of those pieces.
Yeah.
So that is a very common one, that normally I stand up here and talk to councils about, that that's inherently present. You have the controls in place that help to mitigate that.
Thank you very much. And I just want to say thank you to Director Verma, too, also, that this is a reflection of your leadership. So thank you for steering the ship in a way that doesn't just make things aligned, but also expresses the practices that we need to make sure that money is well accounted for. If there are no other, any other comments? All right, the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion, the motion carries. Now, we have a big jump in our agenda here. Thank you. Yeah, here we go. So the next item is the public hearing to consider the approval of a new on-sale wine and two-point-three-percent malt liquor license with the outside service for Toma Richfield. And that goes to Councilmember Ben Wayland.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. On April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the city received the application materials for new on-sale wine and three-point-two-percent malt liquor licenses with outside service for Toma Richfield LLC, doing business as Toma Moho Grill located at seventeen-hundred-sixty-sixth Street East. All required information and documents have been received. All licensing fees have been paid. Public safety background investigation has been completed. Public Safety Director has reviewed the background investigation report and found nothing that would cause the denial of the requested licenses. Does staff have anything further to add? Okay. Then at this point, I would open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this item? And again, if you are watching from home, there is the option to call in. Do we have anyone? No one's waiting on the line. Okay. We'll give people maybe thirty seconds, since it's hard to predict when this will come up in the meeting. And I suppose, while we're waiting, I know the owner is, is here. I don't know if you would like to offer any comment about your, your new restaurant?
Hi, my name is Paul Backer. I'm one of the owners of Toma Moho Grill. Yeah, we're a fast casual restaurant. Our first location's out in Minnetoka. This will be our second location. We do primarily Mediterranean-inspired food. We try really hard to use ingredients you can pronounce and make real food, good food, in a convenient way, and at a price point that is attainable for the everyman. Yeah, that's kind of the summary of what we do. We jokingly call it healthy-ish because you can get, you know, roast chicken with a salad, or you can get, you know, burger with french fries, but all in a pretty convenient manner with relatively modest prices.
And you had said your full opening. Do you want to share that for anyone listening?
Yeah, so we intend, pending, you know, this conversation here, to do a full opening, a full grand opening on the weekend of the fourteenth. We have, you know, quietly opened already, serving food. But, you know, once we get the approval here, hopefully, we'll do a grand opening that weekend, where we're going to do half-off everything for an entire weekend to try to, you know, welcome ourselves to the community, let people come on down and say hi. And, you know, myself will be there, and my business partner, Mike, Mike Knox, he'll be there, too. So we'll, you know, be happy to, you know, meet everyone and say hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like still no one calling in. Okay. Then I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the, the hearing has been closed.
Thank you. Then I would make the motion to approve the issuance of a new on-sale wine and three-point-two-percent malt liquor license with outside service for Toma Richfield LLC, doing business as Toma Moho Grill located at seventeen-hundred-sixty-sixth Street East.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Well, I, I just want to say thank you and welcome. And for folks that didn't hear, we can't advertise, I'm just going to repeat for the record, half-off, folks. Half-off that weekend. It's the weekend of the fourteenth. So I think, welcome to the community. I, I, I think restaurant owners who invest in Richfield find we're a loyal group of people. And, and so we're glad you're part of the community. Welcome. Who knows how this vote's going to go. But all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Welcome, friend.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The next agenda item is a public hearing and the consideration of the approval of the, oh, excuse me, I'm on the wrong page. One page down. This is the, to approve the second reading and hold a public hearing for an ordinance approving the renewal of cable television franchise with Comcast of Minnesota Inc. And the Southwest Suburban Cable Commission, our commission consists of, excuse me, folks, consists of the cities of Eden Prairie, Edina, Hopkins, Minnetoka, and Richfield, Minnesota. The commission administers and enforces the cable franchises on behalf of its member cities. Effective August first, two thousand and twelve, each of the member cities is granted a cable franchise to Comcast. The initial term of the franchise ran for ten years and was extended by the member cities through January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. In two thousand and nineteen, Comcast requested renewal of the franchise, and the Cable Commission has since been engaged in informal negotiations for the renewal with Comcast to reach a mutually acceptable term, terms for the renewal of the cable franchise. In response to Comcast's request for franchise renewal, Cable, the Cable Commission retained an outside consultant to conduct a needs assessment for the future cable-related needs in interest of the member cities for the next franchise term. The Financial Needs and Assessment Report was drafted and, and reviewed on July fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. The commission and Comcast having engaged draft documents and held multiple negotiation sessions to discuss the terms and conditions of the document in an effort to reach mutually acceptable language for the next cable franchise. On May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Cable Commission adopted a resolution twenty-two-three-dash-one recommending that the renewal, that the renewal cable franchise be adopted by each member city. And for folks that are online, there's a summary of some of the terms. But we are going to conduct a public hearing. So the public hearing is now open. And I see we have somebody here ready to speak on, could you introduce yourself and, and give us your address, please?
Certainly. Mayor Protem, my name is Brian Grogan. I'm an attorney with the Minneapolis Law Firm of Moss and Barnett, here tonight representing the Cable Commission, of which Richfield is a member, and happy to give you a short presentation about this document.
Please.
Actually, you did most of my work for me, so I appreciate that. That will allow us to move rather fast tonight. First, a little bit about the commission, changing industry.
We have to thank our, our analyst, senior analyst, Chris Swanson, for that work.
Wonderful.
Yeah, thank you.
And then we'll just go through some of the terms of the franchise. So as you mentioned, Richfield has been the member of a Southwest Cable Commission for about thirty years. Back in the day, it was created by what was then a Minnesota Cable Board to try to put cities together to regulate the development of cable systems in each of the cities around the metro area. Over time, cable television, you know, was very important, but now broadband's rarely important, right? That's what people are focused on. Some people don't even purchase cable. They purchase broadband, and then they stream their content. But the document that's before you is essentially the license that allows the company to put facilities in your streets, in your right-of-way, on the poles, to carry out that mission. So it is still a very important document. The five other cities that are in this commission, Minnetoka, Richfield, Edina, Hopkins, and Eden Prairie. And those are the five that make up the commission. You have two members that sit on that commission. Just a little bit of background, you know, cable TV is one of the few cities, or few companies that gets to use your public right-of-way and doesn't have to answer to the Public Utilities Commission for a regulated rate. So when you purchase electric service, you're purchasing it based on the rates that the Public Utility Commission set. Same with gas service and so on. This is a little bit different in that it's a private entity that's using the streets and able to generate a profit. So they pay you a franchise fee in the form of five percent of the revenue on their cable service product. And that is part of the compensation that allows them to then install their facilities. As cable subscribers are going down, broadband subscribers are going up, you're seeing a decrease in the revenue that you get off of this contract. And that's going to continue, because that's just the world that we live in today. There will be a reckoning coming for our state legislature or at the federal level to try to make the city whole for the use of that city-owned property for these for-profit companies. We're not going to decide that tonight, but I just want to put that on your radar, that that is going to be an important issue that all municipalities will face. Mayor Protem already went through most of the statistics here, so I'm going to skip through that and simply state that the commission in May unanimously recommended approval of this document. And you are the, the fifth of the five cities that I have been through in June to address this issue. Of course, right when I want to get to the next set of issues. How about this? There we go. This will be a ten-year franchise. I already discussed the five-percent franchise fee. We tried to provide a very broad definition. I do want to mention, though, that if someone buys broadband, you don't get a franchise fee on that. So I'm, myself, I'm a Comcast customer. I buy all three services: voice, video, data. And the only one on which I pay a franchise fee is cable services. So again, you're seeing the, the fee's a little bit skewed, and that's just a matter of what state and federal law allow us to do. We have strong customer service standards. Right-of-way management goes back to your city code. So if you direct your city attorney to change your code years down the road, it will flow through to this company as it does to all right-of-way users. I'm going to keep doing it this way. Two more slides. We have three local PEG channels. One that's carrying our meeting tonight, one that's dedicated for educational institutions, one for the public. They will all now be in high-definition, something that the public access producers were very excited about. I like to joke, everyone's excited until they see themselves in high-definition, and then it's not as exciting as one thought. There's a fee that's associated with the provision of these channels. It's set at one and a half percent. That revenue will be earmarked for your city to use to buy this equipment, these monitors, things that you won't have to draw from your general revenue fund. They'll be earmarked revenue for that purpose. We have strong enforcement provisions. They're listed here, and they will maintain the complementary services that they have previously provided in the city. And so with that, Mayor Protem, on May twenty-fourth, the commission unanimously recommended approval of this document, and that is the recommendation of staff tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any, any questions or comments? All right, thank you. It is an open hearing. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment?
Again, Ruane Onesi-Rosa on twenty-four twenty-one West Sixty-Fifth Street. I've tried to keep in touch or keep abreast of council proceedings via Channel sixteen. It's very willy-nilly which meetings get broadcast. The program is never followed. They may broadcast one meeting five times and other meetings not at all. For paying for the service, I, I'm sure there are people out there who don't have all the bells and whistles that you might get with more sophisticated communication systems. But I, during COVID, wanted to get, get, know what's going on. I couldn't find it out on Comcast.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? It's an open hearing. Do we have anybody that's called in? All right, then I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Oh, excuse me, any, any discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Then I would move that we approve the attached ordinance approving the renewal of the cable television franchise with Comcast of Minnesota.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, seen no discussion. It's moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The first motion passes. The second is that we approve a resolution authorizing the summary publication of said ordinance, and I would so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, seen done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The second motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. The next agenda item is on three--
Three fifty-four.
All right, the next agenda item is the second reading of a transitory ordinance providing funding for certain capital improvements for the Liquor Contribution Special Revenue Fund, and that goes to Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you. As part of the Capital Improvement Budget, or CIB, an annual city budget process, certain special revenue funds are allocated each year to fund capital projects identified through the budget process. The source of the special revenue funds are profits from the city's liquor stores. These profits are transferred to the Liquor Contribution Special Revenue Fund. Before they can be used for the identified projects, the charter requires that a transitory ordinance be used to authorize the expenditure of the funds. The proposed funding for two thousand and twenty-three, per the approved budget, totals five hundred and fifty thousand dollars and encompasses several park and recreation-related projects. The projects are listed, and I won't read off the amounts, but the total, five hundred and fifty thousand, covers Fairwood Park play equipment, a new ice arena sign, multi-year community center slash woodleg-- multi-year community center slash Woodlake Building repair, repair also, repair and maintenance at the ice arena, parks in general, and the fences in our parks, outdoor pool improvements, expansion of the skate park, and setting aside funds toward the Woodlake Nature Center building. Does staff have anything further to add for this one?
Questions?
Then I would make the motion to approve the attached transitory ordinance providing for the expenditure of funds from the Liquor Contribution Special Revenue Fund for certain capital improvements.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seen none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. Our next agenda item is the approval of a resolution. Yep, our approval of a resolution amending the allocation of the 2022 General Fund Budget, and that goes to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The Richfield City Council provides that, the, sorry, the city charter provides that the city council must appropriate monies for operations of the city on a departmental-level basis. During the course of this year, the city council amends the operating budget and is referred to as the revised budget. After completion of the annual audit and the closing of the fiscal year, if a department within the city's general fund exceeds its approved appropriation, a transfer of appropriations from another general fund department is required to bring that department's budget into balance. Two general fund departments currently exceed their approved 2022 appropriations. These two departments, and the amount they exceed their 2022 appropriations are as follows. The first one is the Fire Department exceeded their 2022 budget by 183,624, or 3.6%. This was due to unfortunate timing with firefighters on leave and other personnel issues, which caused an inordinate amount of overtime. In addition, six new personnel were hired, which increased operational costs associated with hiring, training, and outfitting those new employees with firefighting gear and uniforms. The second department is Public Works. They exceeded their 2022 budget by 167,698, or 3.6%. This was due to substantially higher utility rates from Xcel Energy that was not known and therefore not reflected in the final budget, as well as higher expenses associated with Emerald Ash Borer tree removals. Public Works has had to expand tree removal efforts in response to the rampant EAB infestation. A portion of the expenditures related to the tree removal was going to be covered from grant revenue in 2022. However, about half that money will not be received until completion of the project in July 2023. To balance the appropriation of the Fire and Public Works Departments, a combination of transfers of appropriations from other departments is recommended as follows. First, transfer of $200,000 from Public Safety Department to Fire Department in the amount of 183,624, and to Public Works in the amount of 16,376. And then a transfer of 151,322 from Recreation Services to Public Works. The recommended transfers will leave a surplus of $118,067 in the Public Safety Department and a surplus of 13,422 in Recreation Services. The surplus in the Police Department budget is due to inability to fill positions with qualified candidates that meet the expectations and standards of the organization. The Recreation Services surplus is primarily because of the later-than-planned filling of the Recreation Services manager role. Other areas that saw lower-than-expected expenditures include program-related supplies and contracts, community center maintenance and repair, and vacant intermittent positions. Additionally, Recreation Services revenue came in higher than budgeted, driven by an increase in building rentals at Woodlake, Strongfield, and Park Shelter rental activity, and record attendance at several Woodlake special events. Finally, it should be noted that the general fund will end 2022 with an estimated surplus of $425,461. Does staff have anything to add?
Nope. I'm available for questions.
Okay. I will make the motion. First, I move that we approve the resolution amending the 2022 General Fund Budget by authorization of a transfer of appropriations from the Public Safety Department to the Fire and Public Works Departments and from Recreation Services to Public Works.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in, all in, or excuse me, is there, there any discussion?
I just wanted to, to say thank you to, again, to Finance Director Verma for paying attention to this, to the heads of those departments. I appreciate that we're always working as a team and that we stick to the overall plan, even if we get some hiccups that mean having to move some things around. But yeah, appreciate everyone who made sure, again, to the earlier report, that we ended 2022 both where we wanted to be, where our policies say we should be, and did it in a way that the outside auditors had, had nothing to comment on.
Thank you. Other comments? I just wanted to echo those comments and, and just not take it for granted that with there are challenges that come up or items that are more expensive that come up, that it's not taken for granted that the leadership in our city works collaboratively to balance that budget. It's a really big deal. And so thank you to all the department heads who made that happen, and the culture that all of, all of you individually and collectively build and maintain. It's really appreciated. So any more, any more discussion? The motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. And then the, the next item is the summary of the City Manager's Annual Performance Evaluation for the period of July 2022 to June 2023, held on June 13th and 15th, as required by Minnesota Statute 13D.5 subdivision 3A. And consider a resolution amending the employment agreement between the City of Richfield and City Manager Katie Rodriguez. Each year, the city conducts a review of the city manager's performance for the previous year, and the review considers the performance of the city manager and the organization as measured against the goals and expectations of the city council. Such performance evaluations are conducted in a closed session pursuant to Minnesota State Statute and summarized in an open meeting. In addition to the performance evaluation, the city council also takes the opportunity to review the city manager's salary and benefits and make any adjustments that may be warranted. And our, our mayor regrets that she's not here, that she's feeling under the weather, but she did, she did share her, her comments that I want to read on behalf of the mayor. And to our mayor, if you're watching and listening, I hope you're not, I hope you're recovering, but we wish you all the best. We look forward to seeing you next week. So this is what our mayor said. "On behalf of the full council, this is the summary of the City Manager, City Manager Rodriguez's performance review. We believe City Manager Rodriguez has been doing an outstanding job. She has worked to build a strong team, and we are pleased that there is now a strategic plan in place to guide our long-term path as a city. We would also like to lift up City Manager Rodriguez's great job of coordinating the city's advocacy at the legislature and her work to put internal improvement processes in place to strengthen organizational infrastructure so that we can better meet the needs of our residents. We appreciate that City Manager Rodriguez models the value, models the, the value of continuous improvement by participating in peer groups and working with mentors. Thank you for your service to our city. We look forward to continuing to work with you in the future." And that's from our mayor, but I also want to give all our council members an opportunity to say any, anything if they'd like to. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes. On behalf of myself personally, I appreciate your guidance every, every so often that we do get together before the meetings. Being new on the council, it's been a learning experience for me, and I value that friendship and knowledge coming towards me. Thank you.
I'll add, or highlight some of the things the mayor said, but just very much appreciate the leadership through the strategic plan process. It feels, it feels like a, a brand-new team to have a clear vision that we all were part of creating, that now we get to go do together. And I think the, no one, no one is under the illusion that everything is perfect and we're just sort of done and get to coast, but that I, I feel like for the first time in my, four, coming up on five years on council, that we, we have a plan that is looking at all of the things we need to keep improving, and no one's trying to avoid conversations about where we need to go. And there's a really healthy, yeah, just atmosphere of collaboration of how do we get there and a shared agreement on, on goals and values. And so I think a lot of that comes to, to leadership, both as an individual and also in the team that you've, you've built. So thank you. I know you've put a lot of work behind the scenes on the, the internal team building in this past year, and it, it shows, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. All right. I would just add that when I joined the council, we entered into a season of really significant change. And then we had the pandemic, and we had, we had multiple crises. We had the, the George Floyd uprisings. And I just want to recognize you, and you really represent the leadership of a lot of our directors through a lot of really dynamic change. And so I think you're doing a great job, but I also think you are a reflection of the team that you've, you have pulled together and built and come to really work very well with. And so I want to say, I want to say thank you and, and good work. And so with that, I will move, will we also, well, I'll, I'll move and then we'll have discussion. I'll move that we approve the resolution amending the city manager's employment agreement with the city reflecting a salary adjustment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? With that, I'll just say again, thank you. Good work. And I'll, we'll, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The, the motion has, has passed. And now the, the next item on our agenda is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you for your kind words. And I, I've said this before, but I feel really lucky to be with the city of Richfield. And I'm glad you talk so much about teams because I don't do anything alone, and it really is a team. And I am proud of the work that we've done in this past year, and I look forward to, to the future. So, but thank you very much for the kind words. They mean a lot. Last meeting, Ruane Onnis Rosson spoke and also spoke at this meeting and had concerns about the city and the HRA not following proper procedures in approving the conduit debt for the upper post-flats development. We work very closely, both the council and, I'm sorry, both the city and the HRA, with our attorneys on any item that we bring before you. But we did go back and review, and everything we did was consistent with all the relevant laws and the charter. Also that night, Mr., and I apologize if I am not saying the names correctly, Mr. Kunnert and Mr. Gallick spoke. They expressed an interest in opening a cannabis business in town. I have reached out to them and explained that we will be having a council or a work session next meeting, which is July 11th, to talk about this issue and give you an update on the adult-use cannabis bill and what the limits are for municipalities and the options. So I let them know about that. I also let them know that the licensing for any retailers will be done at the state level with the Office of Cannabis Management. And they do have a website up, so there is some information out there. And there were some other questions related to the Best Buy agreement, but those were answered at the work session, I'm sorry, at the council meeting.
Thank you, City Manager. All right. We have claims and payroll.
I move approval of claims and payroll.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now we have our hats off to hometown hits, and we'll start with Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I just wanted to thank two groups of residents last week. First, the Woodlake Point condo residents had both me and Mayor Supple out, just to kind of get an update on what was going on in the city, hear about ways they can get involved, how they could report things that they had concerns. Just a really nice, productive conversation. And on the same day, I also joined a similar group of condo owners at Lakeside and Lyndale on the east side of Richfield Lake. Just a nice conversation about, you know, ways to get involved in the city and sort of make it a better place and kind of understand the things that are going on. So it's always fun. If anybody's hearing this and wants to organize a similar thing, I think any of us are always happy to join those.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes. I wanted to give a hats off, actually, to the fellow city workers, the Public Works Department. It was last week during one of the hottest days of the week and where the air quality was horrendous, that nobody should have been out. And they were out doing due diligence of our streets. They were doing street sweeping, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wayland?
Yeah. Wanted to give a big hats off to the Richfield Leadership Network and everyone else who helped host this year's first, but they, everyone I talked to said first annual, which is exciting, Juneteenth celebration, was able to go for the, the last bit of it, hear some of the live music. And it was, it was quite fun and meaningful to, to be there together. And then, oh, the other one I wanted to share from the Community Services Commission is that they and recreation staff have started gathering feedback about these splash pad that will be getting built in Richfield. And so I believe soon, I don't know if a date has been set, but there will be a chance. They've had a couple in-person events. There will be a chance online to weigh in on the preferred design for that. I think the finalists are between a sort of nature theme with flowers and frogs and snails, fixtures that look like those things, and then a, a nautical theme that looks like, like anchors and pelicans and things like that. And so keep your eyes open for, I'm sure it will get included in the weekly email newsletter. Put on social media if you're on social media. Yeah, so those are my two hats off.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. And, and, and I was going to lift up to the, the Juneteenth event, which was a great event, and especially BJ Scoog and the Richfield Leadership Network, and Dr. Joyce Marie, and Coach Omar McMillan, and, and Bukata Hayes. And I know a lot of other community members that came out. It was a great event. I think everybody had a great time. There was incredible food, great music. Hats off to everybody. And I am also going to, to tag on to Councilmember Wayland's lifting up of a splash pad. As a parent with, at the time when I became a council member, really young children and still one young child, having a splash pad's a really big deal. And having something that's cool and free for everybody also, so that it's, it's not exclusive of any children in Richfield is also great. So we're, we're looking forward to that. Thank you so much. And with that, if there are no further comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Or, are you moving? You haven't moved it yet, but I'd move. And then you would second? Yes, thank you. Well, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seen none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. There we go.